We have the, please turn your phones on vibrator or turn them off during the meeting, please. I appreciate that. We have the minutes of January 28th. Are there any corrections on those minutes as mail?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Discussion, approval of claims.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those approve indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Human Resources Department memorandum of personnel transactions. I'll pass that around for signatures. Is there a motion?
I love it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. We have the authorization for the initiation of hiring.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Request for retirement, request remaining on the county health insurance program. Is there a motion there?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those approve indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have item number four, which is the lifting of a tax suspension for J.M.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed. Good. Secondary Road, Mark.
Good morning.
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 Just had one agenda item for today. This permit working right away for Rex Todd on 170th Street Cushion. This is to put a water line across 170th Street between his residence and the road well.
Move it.
Second.
That's just through the road. It's not in the ditch.
It's across the roadway, so they're boring. I put some qualifiers on there to make sure it's five feet underneath, that it's marked to both ends, because it wouldn't be picked up by a mile or one.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. You need this back right away?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I wanted to show off a little bit, too. Our staff won the state paving award this year for our concrete paving job on D-51.
That's wonderful.
So it was voted the number one pavement overlay among 13 that were nominated in the state.
Really?
Part of that will be nominated for the national award from the American Concrete Paving Association as well, so we'll hear about that late this year. But it's really a testimony of the work of Ben, Mike Jarabek, Virgil Bremer, Jason Carlson, Bob Britton. Those guys are the ones who, well, come and hub, set the grades, reset the grades when the contractor or subcontractor makes an error on the grade elevations. And that was just a superior job down there. It's
Good for them.
Probably the smoothest riding pavement I've seen in 30 years I've been doing this job.
That's wonderful.
We were very pleased to receive that last Thursday.
Absolutely. That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you keep those all in your office? Is that what you do with all those awards?
It goes in our conference room, so each of the guys actually got their own certificate of
Good.
And to their workspace.
Good.
Yeah, we're pretty proud of all of them, so.
Do we need to write them a kind of congratulatory note?
I'd be wonderful if the board
Yeah, if you want to do that. All right?
Good.
All right, you can do that. I think we have a consensus to do that.
Yep.
All right, you help me with that. All right, you're welcome. Good deal. Item six is Sharon Burton from Simco. Is the person here? Well, maybe we can just go by that and move on to the next item. Let's go to item number seven, which is Briar Cliff University, Judy Thompson and Mr. Gleiser.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I have with me Judy Thompson. She's a professor of business administration at Briar Cliff University, and she's also the director of the Ross Center for Entrepreneurship. Also to my left, I have Mr. Anthony Rossi. He's a graduate student at Briar Cliff University. He's also a small business owner and member of the entrepreneur community here in Sulan. Today, we're here to seek formal approval for requests of $1,000 to support an entrepreneur contest that's being hosted at Briar Cliff University. It's a general public and collegiate contest. The department has supported it financially in the past, and so I just wanted to give the folks an opportunity to speak to you a little bit about the event.
Okay, good. Judy, you want to?
Yeah. Well, thank you for your support last year. You gave us $1,000 last year, and I know that this program gives a little help to a lot of aspiring entrepreneurs in the Sulan area. We've had pretty good luck. We've only had one person receive money that did not report back, but the rest of them have reported back and have done good things with the money. We accept applications from area colleges as well as area Sulan entrepreneurs, and candidly, SEGC will serve as preliminary judge, so he'll weigh through all the initial applications, and he'll narrow it down to seven. And then on that Tuesday night, you are all welcome to come. Has anyone ever watched Food with the Sharks? Shark Day. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Shark Day.
Shark Day?
Yes.
It's based loosely on that, but the seven finalists have five minutes to make their case. The judges have five minutes to ask questions. After they've heard all seven of the presentations, the judges go away and make a decision and decide how to divide up.
What? Kennedy?
Well, I was actually a winner in the past.
Oh, you were.
Yes, and, you know, for me, it's a great thing. It gives other people an opportunity, you know, such as myself, to, you know, stay here locally instead of trying to, you know, find other sources outside of the community. So that was a huge thing for me, because then I can spend that money locally as well. So it really helps out, and you wouldn't believe the amount of people that are really behind like this, you call it movement, per se, for the community, because we all want to stay here, you know. So like I said, it's a big, big thing to get us to stay here. It really helps out a lot.
We want to keep our young population here, too. We really do, so this is
What was your project?
The first one was actually called Your Town. It was a nightlife magazine. My designers moved to Canada, and the other one said he wanted to become a world's strongest man. He's actually in the Arnold Classic this year, so
Is he really?
He's achieving his goal. It's awesome. But the other project that the money ended up going towards is called Double D's Driving Service. It's a designated driving service here in Sioux City. Will drive you and your car home anywhere in town. Also, we're working on getting pedicabs here in Sioux City to connect Fourth Street with the event center, Hard Rock and Pearl. That way, it's eco-friendly traffic or transportation, excuse me, back and forth, you know, not harming the environment and keeping costs down, so.
I move the expenditure of $1,000.
Do you have it in your budget? Is there a second?
Yeah, it was a line item in the budget, and I just wanted to let you folks know that the one business that didn't report back didn't actually get the dollars that they were awarded. It was, you know, based on reporting process, and once you complete that, then you receive those dollars. Those are $200. That one project was awarded, but so those dollars are actually going to roll over to this year for the contest. So I just wanted to reiterate that fact. And, yeah, I do just think it's a great resource, a great exercise for small business owners, or small business entrepreneurs, and it's something that will promote to the communities throughout rural Woodbury County and see if we can get any applicants submitted and enter in the contest. And I'm going to sit on the panel as a judge, so.
Oh, are you?
Second.
It sounds like a good, good project. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, this is, this is a project Rob Marcus brought to us about three or four years ago, and he was very supportive of it every year.
Well, we have to encourage and do everything we can to keep our young entrepreneurs in the Sulan, Sioux City area, so this is a good start.
Yeah, and it's definitely an event that other economic development professionals in the area are supportive of, so want to, you know, have that visibility and that partnership in the community, so.
Wonderful. Oh, nice.
Do you have a business card?
I don't.
Oh, okay.
We
Might need your services.
We'll get you one. We watch St. Patty's Day weekend, so.
Okay. And I'm interested in the pedicabs, too. That's something I thought about, too, so I want to talk to you about that.
Good project. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go back to item number six. We have the Simco representatives here. Do you want to step up and explain what we need to do here? Give your name, please, and?
I'm Sharon Burton from Simco, and FEMA has come back with some more technical changes on the Woodbury County's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and they have asked us to do another six-month extension so we can get those changes made and all the paperwork done and submitted again.
Did you know those amendments were coming, or changes, or anything like that? How did?
We knew the changes were coming. We didn't know
To the extent?
To the extent, yeah. So hopefully, this will be it. We're not happy with the process either.
I can imagine.
They won't make any promises about that.
Right, no, you can't.
The last one was, they said only a few minor changes, and then 60 days later, they come back with a whole bunch of changes.
Yeah. Just keep moving the goalposts back.
We're not the laboratory frustrated, no process.
Pretty disturbed.
So we feel pain that this is just taking way too long.
Move it.
Signature.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor with the motion?
I'll come back and get it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. This is a copy for us, or do we?
That's the one I need to send to the state.
Okay, and I need to sign this?
Yes.
Okay, will do. Do you need, do you need this back right now?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Sure.
I'll get it in the mail.
Faster the better.
If they would only be faster and better.
Yeah, right. You're welcome. Okay. I think that the number eight and number nine should be switched. We have hearing of any individual wishing to make a presentation on item on each other, not Go ahead.
Got six here, so you can pass it around. And I've got some extra topics for the media.
James and Bruggen Taxpayers Research Council, 516 Nebraska Street. I've got some concerns about the juvenile detention budget, and I want to run through some information with you guys. At the very top here, at the very start, underneath fiscal year 2013, I asked the state for your actual bed days in your juvenile detention department, and they broke it down. As you'll see, there was about 3,000 Woodbury County individuals and about 2,000 that were from out of county. Now, if you take your juvenile detention budget in fiscal year 13, that was your actual numbers, and this is also conferred with the state, but your actual bed day cost was $312 per bed day for all of your juveniles. Now, if you look at the next set of numbers, you'll see that the out-of-county revenue, you guys charge $100 to those outside agencies for providing a service to them. Now, the state of Iowa also provides a reimbursement, which actually gets broken down to $71 per day, which leaves the Woodbury County taxpayer on the hook for $141 per bed day for every out-of-county, which also happens to be majority out-of-state individuals. Now, if you take those numbers, and as you see, if you move to the right, you'll see that the state of Iowa reimbursement paid over $165,000 for those out-of-county individuals, and you'll see the Woodbury County taxpayer actually subsidized these individuals by $328,000. So the first thing I would like to address is how much you are charging these out-of-agency or out-of-county agencies for services. There's no reason why the state of Iowa reimbursement or the Woodbury County taxpayer should be subsidizing these out-of-county and out-of-state individuals. So that's the first thing we need to look at. The second thing we need to look at is possibly finding ways to change the overhead costs of juvenile detention. Is there some organizational changes that could be done to help reduce that overall bed cost? Those are things that really need to be discussed. And the final bottom graph there that you can see is just to kind of show what happened in fiscal year 13. If we would have went to one of the three regional centers, I know there's 10 actual juvenile detentions across the state, but for lack of paper space here, I just provided three. You'll see that Cherokee actually charges, there are 16 or 15 counties in the region, $150, and that also includes transportation costs. Now, and you'll see that Council Bluffs and Eldora, Council Bluffs charged their counties $165, while Eldora charged their counties $100. Now, if you would have taken that number of the Woodbury County juveniles that we actually house that are from our own county, we would have only had to write a check to Cherokee for about $454,000, which would have been a savings of about $1.2 million. Now, you may have still needed a couple staff for the additional costs that I'm not aware of, but there's no way on earth that whole $1.2 million savings would have been eaten up by these costs. The point of these numbers, again, is that we really need to look at what we're doing with juvenile detention. Should we be charging these outside entities more? Should we reorganize the department? Or should we even actually do what most counties in the state of Iowa do and join a region and find lower costs overall? So I'd appreciate any comments from the board.
James, I agree with you. Things have to be looked at. But what's missing here is this is too simplistic. You go back two years, and we were full, and we were sending our juveniles to Cherokee, not on a regular basis.
It was about four years ago, I think it was.
All right.
But I get your point.
Time flies when you haven't found
No doubt.
But anyway, we are geared up for what we have to. Now, if you're recommending that we close that, the juvenile detention center, then that's a discussion I think we can have. But I don't know how you break down these costs, because we, when you say the savings, I think what you're saying is if you closed it and we farmed out all of our juveniles, that works today. It's like the sheriff's department coming in and saying we're overcrowded. Well, that's today. Yesterday, you know, maybe you had a lot of room. But if you've got a good answer, or if you've got a group of people that think they have a good answer to this, the board's very receptive to listening.
The bottom numbers would be an example of what would happen if you would have closed the facility here.
Right, but that is today.
Correct.
If you take
These are fiscal year 13 numbers, too, I'd want to point out.
All right. But if you used 20 Woodbury County juveniles
Correct.
What would those numbers be?
That is why I'm having a discussion with you with this today. You know, for example, the numbers in the agenda package show that they average only two Woodbury County residents a day. And obviously, those numbers and savings would fluctuate. So instead of coming up with hypotheticals in the future, I thought we would take a snapshot of what happened in fiscal year 13 and say, these are real numbers. These aren't hypothetical situations. So that's why those 13 numbers are there. Now, obviously, numbers can go up and down just like in the jail, and that would result in your savings. But it's hard to imagine that even if we sent 20 individuals there, take, you know, 20 times 365 days a year, max capacity, it's not going to eat up $1.6 million. I mean, you're still going to have savings there. I mean, if anybody has a calculator on, we could easily do the math real quick if you ran 20 individuals.
Well, if you had 20 individuals, you're looking at $3,000 a day if you use Cherokee.
Yeah.
And then do they provide the transportation?
Cherokee does provide the transportation. Obviously, Council Bluffs doesn't, or Eldora. And those are additional costs, and I admitted when I said that, that
Right, and see, that, that changes all the figures.
It does, but we should have a comprehensive report from your department, or from juvenile detention, or from the person who's in charge of that center and the board, and actually show what those other numbers are. This is an opening discussion. I'm not saying
Right, and we're more than receptive to that, except there's a lot of things that enter in here.
There are a lot of things. I understand that.
Seems to me that, are you referring Eldora Regional? Is that the state facility?
Yeah.
I'm not sure they take outside
They do. I did talk to the director.
At $100 a day?
Yeah, and there are member counties that are, they only charge 50 bucks a day, but outside member counties are 100. And obviously, you know, these prices could be negotiated. Costs could go up over time, but I think it really deserves a real discussion of what we're actually getting out of our juvenile detention department, and why are we taxpayers subsidizing those out-of-county, out-of-state individuals?
I don't know if we're subsidizing them. I mean, I don't know if, I don't believe that these costs, these contracts were set up to fully involve the total operation of our juvenile detention center. That was a supplement to what we were doing already in there, James.
Well, we know that your per bed day cost is 312 with all your juveniles.
Right.
We know you're only getting $100 per juvenile, so you're not even covering your costs from those out of state. So you have to be subsidizing it somehow, and your budget is based on the
It was never, I don't think those contracts were ever set up to fully engulf the full cost
And we should consider that.
Of our, of our youngsters that we put into that facility.
And if they're not, we should look at renegotiating those contracts to cover
And I also know that Cherokee is in competition with us, because they're bidding on those same contracts that we have.
Well, it seems to me there's two issues here, and one is we're not charging enough per day.
I would agree.
Pretty simple, which means the taxpayers are footing that bill. All right. The other thing is, could it be more efficient? Boy, that's a tough one, because the rules for juveniles are extremely different than adults.
One to five.
One to five. I mean, that's incredible. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days. So, you know, they may, they may be using too many pencils and paper clips
Something.
But when you get right down to it, I don't know where they cut.
Well, I think with, I don't know how many part-time people he has, but full-time, then he's got supervisors. We're paying them a lot of money up there, and I agree, we're not, we're not charging enough. We shouldn't be subsidizing out-of-county inmates or juveniles if they can't pay the total bill of what it costs today, like your meal, your bed space.
Are you talking about charging the
Like the BIA, the Union
The youngsters' parents?
Dakota County
Who are you talking?
No, I'm talking the out-of-county people.
Oh, the out-of-county people.
Dakota County, Union County, and Bureau of Affairs is what was stated last week during the
We should be charging them what it really costs to house them.
Then what if we lose those contracts to other
We lose them, we lose them.
Well, I don't agree.
Woodbury County shouldn't be paying, Woodbury County should not be paying to house people at a cheaper rate.
But there are two ways to probably look at that, because until you have a comparison of even all the Nebraska, if there are Nebraska facilities and the other facilities, you don't want to price yourself out of that extra income and revenue. We, we learned that this year. The revenue was underreported, so then we were able to get it in there and reduce our tax asking, and it probably costs, there's a certain amount of staff, even if you have two or you have 10. So if you can get some revenue for the extra eight
But I think
Even if it is not 312, because I think we'll lose all those contracts if we go that high.
We will. I know that Dakota County was transporting all of their youngsters, because they have no facility in that area at all, to Madison, Nebraska.
And Omaha.
And Omaha, and they decided to work with us to develop a contract with Woodbury County. We did not calculate these figures for them to pick up full cost of our youngsters, well, not for our youngsters, but for the housing of their youngsters in our program. This was a supplement to what we were doing already.
And I agree, we want revenues in, but I think the revenue should at least cover our expenditures, and if that won't work, then we really need to have a discussion about the overhead in juvenile detention, or possibly closing down juvenile detention and using one of the regional facilities, what
I think that would be such a sad
Oh, yeah. I don't think that we can ever consider
Juveniles out of our county. I mean, I really do.
I didn't hear you. It would be sad, but I also think it's sad that
That's a step back, Bruce, James.
I think it's sad that the Woodbury County taxpayers had to subsidize it by over $300,000.
All right. See, now, you're using the word subsidize, and I, that doesn't work for me.
Okay.
If you have the same costs, no matter what, and you're bringing in revenue, how are you subsidizing?
You're subsidizing because the revenue doesn't cover the actual cost for housing the individuals.
All right, so eliminate the revenue side of it, and then you're charging the taxpayer more because you don't have an offset.
Ah, but then there's a, the question is a cost-benefit analysis. Does it make sense for today, when we only have two juveniles in there, to actually have a $1.6 million budget to cover two million, two individuals?
No, it does not.
Exactly. So maybe
But 30 days from now, if you've got 20-some, where do you get the personnel and everything else to manage that? I mean, you don't manufacture it.
Do, we have part-time workers there. Are we sending part-time workers home when the numbers are low? I mean, there's a lot of different things that
Don't use the part-time workers unless you're out of full-time work.
I'm fairly certain they have part-time workers in
No, I was, I was involved in getting the part-time workers to reduce the costs. But they're not using part-time workers, you know, when they're not needed. So how you can say that they are, I don't understand.
This is why we should have a great discussion about juvenile detention.
Right.
Look at these details, look at these issues, and there's probably things that nobody in this room had thought of, because the director's not here. We really need to have the county come up with a report from juvenile detention, or look at these figures, and, I mean, I'm not perfect, so I might have made a mistake somewhere, and I admitted that I don't have transportation costs in the savings, but this is to facilitate a discussion, and I think you guys should have direction to juvenile detention to look at all these different options.
Seems to me we ought to be That's what that's for, and I agree with that.
Thank you.
It seems to me we ought to be looking at what Nebraska, Madison is charging, Omaha's charging, is it Canton, South Dakota, or Sioux Falls, what they're charging.
And see, that was done, Mark.
If they're charging less than we are, there's not much we can do about it. But if they're charging 152 bucks a day for out-of-area people
Yep.
We're giving it away.
Yes.
And so, and I do know that our contracts are coming due with Dakota County and with the BIA, and I do know that they're looking at other facilities in this area that they're thinking about, and if we lose those contracts, then we lose this income.
You know, the other thing, embedded, of course, that's not really on here, just, but what's embedded in that juvenile detention budget are all the prevention, what I call prevention services that impact the number of juveniles that are actually having to spend the night there. So I don't know how you figure that in. It's hard to do
I think we should ask
But I know it's working.
Yes, we should ask the director to provide all that information, so
Well, we, we have a lot of that information.
We do have, we have it all, and we can, we can do what you're talking about and bring additional information, Jim, about what our practice is there and why we're doing it the way we are, and determine, you know, maybe we have too many people, maybe we don't have enough. Can we charge our outside contractors additional dollars without losing them? And if we lose them, then what impact is that going to have on, on the detention center? We live in a community of, what, 80, 90,000 people. I don't think that we're ever going to lose the need for it, from my perspective. I think we're always going to need a juvenile detention center.
The good news is, today, we have less juveniles from Woodbury County than previous years.
Right, and the reason is, is that there's been a lot of work in developing, and we've done this for at least 25 years that I know, diversionary programs to keep those numbers down. We very rarely have an overcrowding problem in the juvenile detention from our own teenagers, so, yeah.
Just wanted to bring this to everybody.
Yeah, but I think that we need to look at it, and we will look at it, and it'll probably be one of the discussion points when we go to work this summer in looking at those areas. Okay, good discussion. Item number nine, or is there anyone else making a presentation on an item not on the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to item nine on further budget discussion. Dennis, you want to come up and go through where we're at relative to budgets that we've reviewed, and what we've added, and what we've cut?
Dave, do you want me to just go through the memo here?
Yes, I would like that.
Okay. I prepared a memo for the board and the public here. You know what this memo does? It gives, you know, we completed the four weeks of hearings. And what this memo does, it gives, you know, we completed the four weeks of hearings. Over the past four weeks, we've done all the hearing, initial hearings, everything is still subject for review. I'm gonna address several items concerning the status of the fiscal year 2015 proposed budget as it currently stands. First, I outlined additions to revenues and the reductions to expenditures. There were several revenues that were increased due to new information received. The additions to revenues were, one, recovering revenue from federal overtime, an amount of fifty thousand dollars involving investigations. In that case, we took fifty thousand from investigations, moved over three separate departments, there's three different categories. That fifty thousand, we now budget the revenue to offset the tax asking there with additional revenues. Second, revenue from the city assessor, county assessor, and the city of Sioux City totaling fifty-one thousand two oh four, covering expenses of G I S person being transferred to the auditor slash recorder's office. And three, revenue for housing juveniles, the juvenile detention facility was increased by sixty-five thousand. Those actually came from outside sources where, when we looked at, when he reported last week, it appeared there was a difference. He did come back, and there was sixty-five thousand we did add. Total additions to revenues totaled one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Denny, let me stop you because of prior discussion. Do you know right off the top of your head what the total on the detention facility was?
The total revenues? It came up to a little over three hundred and fifty thousand, plus we have juvenile detention grants, which is three, three hundred and eighty thousand.
That's money we do not have to tax for, that actually offsets.
That's offsetting. If we budget the revenue, that actually reduces our tax asking. If we don't budget the revenue, it goes in reserves, it doesn't help us. Okay, next, over the, over the past four weeks of hearings, reductions sold eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Reductions or additions were by fund as follows. General basic fund was reduced by seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. General supplemental fund was reduced by one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three ninety. And rural basic fund was increased by eighty-five thousand, five fifty. Now, when I say that was increased, what happened there? We did decrease our expenditures by moving a sergeant in the uniform patrol over to rural basic because we had eight people approved, and we only had seven budgeted there because expenditures were a little off-kilter here where they moved somebody from the uniform patrol in rural basic back to general basic the current year. We took the numbers off the current year, so we're only budgeting seven, so we did raise that back to what it should be and reduce the general basic expenditure where we're short on revenue to cover expenditures.
Going back to revenue.
Okay.
What happened to the federal prisoner money?
The federal prisoner money, that actually goes into a lineup called federal reimbursement, the U.S. Marshals. That is budgeted in the general basic fund under the J.
Alright.
I will now break down the proposed tax asking by fund, which I'll show the new tax revenues, which are due to valuation changes, increases, and rollbacks, which increase or decrease. And it'll show the increase above the new taxes. So when you have the general basic fund, all we can generate there is additional new taxes because we're capped at three fifty per thousand. We cannot generate any new money there because we can't go above the three fifty as the board is doing by now. So new taxes are ninety thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. In general supplemental, the new taxes there, if we left the levy rate the same, is sixty-nine thousand, one sixty-five. With additional taxes, we're talking an increase of two million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine fourteen. We will get into that figure a little bit further down the line here. County mental health, there, there is no new taxes because we have a flat minimum, maximum levy, we levy, but to offset a little bit of the general sup, we did use three hundred and ninety thousand, three ninety-two of reserves to reduce the tax asking in that fund to cover part of the increase in general supplemental fund because there we're levying one time only to set up a cash reserve in our case management fund through benefits. So we're increasing general sup, but we're decreasing the mental health. Now, when we decrease the mental health levy down to three point two million, even though it'll be low to three point five, it does not affect our equalization order. I did check with the lady down DHS, and she says it does not affect because it goes off where we initially started with. Next year, we won't have the three hundred and ninety thousand levy for cash carryover in general sup because it'll all be there, it's just to run the cash management for three months. That'll increase, it'll decrease in general sup next year, but it'll go up in county mental health to get back to our maximum. So that's a trade-off in that. Debt service, new taxes are nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, we kept the rate the same. We're gonna need a slight levy increase there, which will generate thirty thousand, ninety dollars more there on additional taxes. When you get to rural basic, there, we have new taxes because of valuation on ag property, the actual valuation of fifty percent over last year were assessed, but then they rolled it back by forty-three percent. We use only forty-three percent where last year, I think, is around sixty-two percent. So didn't cover all of it because land values are going up so fast, but in this case here, new taxes are one hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight twenty. Additional taxes to fund what we need to do, which we'll get down here a little later, is ninety-three thousand, five fourteen. So your new taxes due to new increased evaluations and rollbacks amount to two hundred and ninety thousand, eight seventy-nine. And the reason that's lower than past years is because there's a five percent rollback on commercial industrial property. We do get reimbursed for that, so I have that as a tax replacement credit in each of the funds. So we do get that back, but as new tax to the taxpayer is two hundred and ninety thousand. Additional taxes is one million, nine thirty-seven, taking the plus and minus on mental health and general subs. So our total tax increase would be two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, zero, zero, five.
So you're saying the rollbacks were being reimbursed or?
On the commercial industrial, the five percent.
What about the other?
On, no, there is no reimbursements. This was part of the total package the governor and legislature passed, and the governor signed, where it's gonna reduce valuation on commercial industrial and railroads. We don't get reimbursed for the railroad five percent, we do on commercial industrial. But we do get reimbursed that this year and next year, a hundred percent. After that, there's no guarantees.
So Dennis, does that mean the residential's gonna pick up that rollback that commercials getting? Where's that money?
The rollback commercials getting comes back in as a property tax replacement. So that's back in the fund that I budgeted to help offset taxes. If we didn't do that, we'd have a windfall.
But by reducing property tax, they're reducing our tax asking,
Right.
which means we're gonna have less money, which is gonna cause us to tax more to cover the loss.
Potentially will.
Thank you, State.
Yep, once these commercial industrial rollback rebates come, or quit coming back to us full funding, that's when it's gonna cause a problem. So for this coming fiscal year, the next fiscal year will be reimbursed. When you come to sixteen, seventeen fiscal year, we aren't guaranteeing anything, and the rollback would be bigger. If no changes are in revenues.
Is that called a trickle-down?
Yeah, somewhat. It's always good to start a program. The problem is, they always seem to filter out the program, then it comes right back to the counties and the cities and schools. Cities and counties really got the problem. Schools are done on a foundation formula that, they're kinda covered. We don't have a foundation formula where the state reimburses us money or the city. So if no new, no changes in revenues or expenditures occur, the following tax rates would be used to generate the proposed tax increase. Now, you have to keep in mind that the board of supervisors has reduced the tax rate over the last eight fiscal years in the cities by thirty-eight point one two seven cents per thousand over the last eight years, and increased by one dollar and twenty-five cents in townships. Now, the reason for the increase in townships, we are levying one dollar and twenty-five cents for the special bridge project, which the rural people and the farm borough endorsed by the majority, which is a program that will be going our second year, we got three years left of that program. And, you know, thank goodness we did that because there's so much talk about bridges deteriorating, deplorable conditions. The board took steps with the consent of the rural people to attack this problem before anybody else did. So when you get to the bottom line here, you can see how the general, I showed comparison with the current year tax rate, the proposed tax rate for 2015. General basic, there is no change because we aren't going above the cap. General sup, it's going up by fifty-nine cents per thousand. County mental health services is going down nine cents per thousand, that's where we have that trade-off for one year. And then debt service is going up eight tenths of one cent. So the total tax rates, if it's as left as it is right now, will go up fifty cents, almost fifty-one cents per thousand. The rural basic is a little higher because we had a bigger increase in tax asking in rural basic because county libraries are doing a capital project, they increased forty-seven thousand. And we did move the sheriff sergeant back to rural basic where it should have been. So their rate's going up nine cents on the rural basic levies, so for townships, the taxes will be going up sixty cents per thousand. To relate this back, and we get in more detail next week after we get done today, house with a hundred thousand dollar taxable, taxable value in Sioux City, which really is about two hundred and fourteen, fifteen thousand assessed, will go up fifty dollars for every hundred thousand. In the rural, for every hundred thousand there, it'll go up sixty dollars per thousand.
What did you say, Denny, for a taxable value of a hundred thousand, fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars. Now, remember, that's the rollback number.
Yes.
And in the townships, it'll be sixty dollars for every hundred thousand. So now I'll break down why we are going up in these proposed tax askings. In the past two fiscal years, the counties used cash reserve that, for the most part, came from insurance holidays. We did four insurance holidays. The board chose to use cash reserves to try to keep the tax rate down. What that does, it offsets the tax asking for benefits in the general supplemental fund where we levied the money. So if we use cash reserves, that's less transfer we have to do. This year, we aren't doing that because we haven't had insurance holidays so far. Because the claims are higher this year than they have been the last five, six years together. So with no planned insurance holidays, that's what's causing the increase in our general sup on the fringe benefits. Two, the expenditure increase has occurred in the following areas. The county, and this is what I was just talking about, the county employees' benefits levy in a general supplemental fund and moved to the general basic fund increased one million, one hundred and thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's because we have to tax a full amount because we are not using reserves out of general basic to help reduce that at this point in time. The second one, the county cannot use theirs to offset, yeah, I just said that, offset the allocation. Next one, in the upcoming year, there are new expenditures that are currently, currently budgeted for in the new fiscal year, but not in the old year. First, courthouse security, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's a new department revision that's being created to provide security to the courthouse. And general election expenses over the primary election in an amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand. That one there is the one hundred and thirty-six thousand difference from operating a general election and a primary election. Primary's done this year, general's done next year, then we have one off here. And finally, there's an increase in self liability fund allocation in an amount of five hundred thousand. We're currently budgeting a million dollars, proposing to go to a million and five. The reason for that is, we are currently at four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that used to be a two to two and a half million dollar fund through various, you know, litigation, attorney fees, claims on workers' comp, other types of insurance that we don't use as self-insurance funds, like the building here. We got four hundred and fifty-eight thousand left this year, I hope we make it through the year. So we don't have any reserves basically left in our liability fund to catch up. We have to really get that fund back up to where there is some reserves in case something does come up during the year.
Originally, you started that reserve out at, at two million dollars.
Yes.
A number of years back.
Right.
And now we're down to four hundred and some odd thousand?
Four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five months ago this fiscal year, and the transfer's already been made.
When we add this other, this five hundred thousand, what, what does that mean for fiscal year twenty fourteen? Does that bring it, we'll just have five hundred thousand dollars in that?
Well, with our workers' comp and our insurances, attorney fees, it'll probably dwindle that million and a half down to about eight hundred thousand to put back into reserves. Now, once we get through this year, if we're so lucky not to have any lawsuits or litigation, and our workers' comp claims go down, then potentially in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, we could reduce that million and a half down. But we need to have money in the bank, or if we have judgments, you're gonna be borrowing money and paying interest to pay the judgments.
What's your projections on this, on the, for the rest of this fiscal year then, Dennis, out of that fund?
It's gonna be very close, because you still, every month, we pay out sixty thousand. Now, that, sixty times five is four hundred and eighty thousand, we're gonna be close. And hopefully, it doesn't come that high during the last few months. It's hard to project.
Do you know, have a handle on our workers' comp claims?
That'd be a human resource question.
Yeah, I figured it was.
No, we can go back into the line I'm budgeting, look at what we've been spending there, you know, for past history, but it's not a small number. I'm guessing three, four hundred thousand.
What was your question, Jackie? I didn't hear it.
I said, I was just wondering about the workers' comp claims. I don't, you know, sometimes organizations can kind of beef up their safety or whatever and reduce, and target, try and reduce those claims. I know when I worked at, the Sioux City schools did that, and I don't know a lot about it because I was on the fringes of watching it, but I know they had a big effort on, you couldn't get up on a chair.
Right.
You know, jinx lightbulb, you had to have, they passed out step ladders. Well, their goal was to reduce their workers' comp claims, and they were successful. And I don't know if ours are out of whack or if that's an area we could look at.
After all these increases, it's very hard to use reserves because we have an obligation. Our general basic fund is gonna happen next fall, next spring, out of this next current year budget. That's where we actually, instead of borrowing the money, we did an internal service loan by resolution, and we set it up where we've moved a hundred thousand already in the tax increment fund, which will be reimbursed four to five years down the road by, you know, when C F arts come online or any other new valuations.
They'll come online when C F, twenty, is that twenty seventeen?
That'll actually be eighteen, nineteen, when we get our first TIF revenues off of that.
Twenty eighteen, nineteen?
Eighteen, nineteen, yes.
Okay.
Because sixteen is a hundred percent abatement.
Right.
Which covers seventeen, eighteen, so seventeen would be eighteen, nineteen.
When we start, first start seeing revenue from that.
From C F. Now, hopefully, there's development before that where we could get TIF revenues off of it. Prime example would be, we just did a budget, or budget amendment, increment district amendment. We did number two, and that, or that's number one. Number, the first one was the C F, number one was the addition we just did a few months ago. In that, we did capture a fly ash plant down there, that'll generate about fifty thousand a year. So that'll be money coming in, not this year, it'll be coming in fifteen, sixteen. Which then it'll start helping us, and hopefully, there's more development down that area, and I think there will be. So using reserves, our general base is gonna be very hard to do. We could use some, and we see where we're at after today, and then we could use some reserves there. And when you use reserves and cash in the general basic fund, that'll offset the tax asking in general supplemental. What we do, if we reduce, say, a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, we're using reserves, that's a revenue as reserves. We can take and reduce our fringe benefit levy by a hundred to two hundred thousand. Using reserves is just, it just helps the current year. When you get down, that's where we're caught now because we've tried to hold the tax asking down the last three, four years by using reserves, that does catch up eventually.
Right.
It did catch up with this year because claims were much higher.
Barry?
Uh, Denny, sitting here just going, I mean, the eight hundred thousand dollars, what are we planning on borrowing in the capital improvement budget?
We are borrowing about eight hundred and I think thirty-nine thousand, but that doesn't cover any of this stuff here.
I realize that, but that doesn't leave any room to go out and borrow for the road, or is there a way to borrow?
Borrow for what?
Borrow for the road, our eight hundred thousand for the road.
Um, we can borrow for the road under general obligations, which we pledge our tax increment revenues to it, but then you're gonna be paying interest.
Well, the interest we'd be paying, I don't know, would be as bad as the amount of taxes we're looking at raising.
Yeah, we do it a little bit, but.
I think that's a discussion maybe for next week, but I think the board should have.
Because we've already passed the resolution, and we've already done an ordinance saying we wouldn't do it. We'd have to rescind all that.
Right, but we could still bond for it, that's what I'm saying.
A good bond for it, yes.
But I think the discussion has to be held because I don't know what kind of interest we'd be talking about and what the dollar factor would be on that.
Uh, we can hear that, to give an idea.
This can create another problem for next year, the way we've done it, is what I'm thinking.
What problem?
We've gotta make that second payment.
The seven hundred thousand. That's why I'm saying you really can't use any general basic reserves unless we got some new money coming in that we'd use for one time.
Right, and that's why I'm saying if we bond for it, that would offset some of that.
Right, and then you could use reserves. But again, somewhere, we gotta quit trying to use reserves and balance what we're taking into expenditures.
Yeah, you wouldn't be using reserves though if you bond for it.
No, we wouldn't, but what are you gonna do with the extra eight hundred thousand general basic fund then? Why would we do, why would we?
That's why I say this discussion, I think, should be held unless everybody else is much clearer on it than I am.
No, I actually brought that up to Denny too, and he sorta had the same reaction when, when I brought it up too. It's like, well, we've already done it the other way, but I wondered the same thing.
That's because I think Denny's been around long enough, he knows we don't want to go into debt. And I think that has a lot of bearing on what, you know, he might recommend.
And he said it makes.
I think we ought to have a discussion there. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, we've gotta look at every way that we can, you know, to hold those, those taxes down. And if we can, if we can do it through bonding and. And if we can, if we can do it through bonding and, and borrowing and, and borrow it at two or three percent, uh, that might be cheaper than, uh, than taxing for it. I don't know.
I don't, I don't either, and that's why.
Something that has become a reality to me here is the, um, on the second page, under general supplemental, we're short a million and one. Now, the reason we're short a million and one is because we have used the health insurance holidays and other funding one time to cover the increase in employee costs. So what we did doing that is kicked it down the road.
Yeah, using reserves, just, it's just, it's a Band-Aid to get us where we want to keep the rates down when we're time, tough times for the last three, four years.
And we don't have a Band-Aid big enough to cover this.
No, we do not.
Or our box is empty of Band-Aids. We've used up the Band-Aids the last few years.
So it's come home to roost. Okay?
He knew it when we were doing it.
Well, but I mean, for the past nine budgets, we've cut, 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 cut every year, and we're down to bodies.
Right.
It's very simple. It's people.
When, when you take what we've done over the last eight years on the city levies, I'm not talking about the rural because there's been a shift because of increase, such an increase in ag values, things like that. But with the cities, we've actually reduced thirty-eight cents over eight years. When you get to the ninth year, we're going up fifty. So over eight years, we've only gone up twelve cents per thousand. Yes, there's been valuation increase of new values, but we've only gone up, well, per twelve cents over the last nine years. That's pretty, pretty incredible because we haven't really had a tremendous tax base increase. We are tax based for. I can go county to county to county. Blackhawk has a billion and six more than we got, and they aren't that much bigger than us. Potawatomi County's bigger than us because, God bless them, they got three casinos, they got, what, a new Microsoft building on there, they got old...
Google.
Bass Pro Shop, Google, yeah, Google. We don't have those here.
Well, we do have, but it's three, four years before it comes on the tax rolls.
Right. That would be a tremendous increase in CF.
If we could kick this down the road, three more years, we'd be in great shape.
Right. But that's a long, it's a short period of time, but it's a long period of time when you do budgeting. Because you're sitting there trying to balance this out with our limited growth, but in the back of our mind, I hope we're all here to see it, it's going to change in four years, five years. So we're kind of down to the bare, we're down to the bottom line here. We're down to bare bones budgets. It's going to be hard to reduce more reductions because then you're talking like Marcus, bodies, then you're talking about potentially less services to the public. So what's an answer? A good answer, I got two transfers I think we should consider. One is from riverboat funds, two, general basic. With this transfer of seventy-four thousand, nine seventy-one, the, it covers our non-mandated expenses such as Meals on Wheels, senior center, Mobile Senior Center, sexual assault, things like that. That covers that. So we're still short two hundred and forty-eight thousand, our general basic fund. If we use the seventy-four thousand, nine, almost seventy-five thousand, that reduces our two forty-eight down by seventy-five thousand. The other transfer that we have done in the past is moving money from low cost of sales tax to partially fund the, uh, planning zoning department. In this case, I use the figure of ninety-three thousand, five fourteen, because that will actually be a tax reduction on your rural basic fund, and that would take care of the additional taxes that we're levying right now to make things balance out. So then we don't have a hundred and twenty-one thousand new taxes, but that's because we moved a person over from general basic to rural basic, and also the county library's asking for forty-five thousand extra for a capital project, which they have their board, they prove it, they tell us how much to levy on the townships. We don't have any choices on that.
Dennis, do you need a motion on those two items?
Yes.
I'd move it.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same side. Are there any more cuts that we could do in some of these budgets?
You want to do a low cost of sales tax one too? Or did you do both?
Yeah, there were both of them.
Oh, same time? Okay.
Let's eliminate the tax analysis so we don't have to listen to this anymore.
You don't like to listen to bad news.
I guess you don't know how much I say.
We have to listen to the bad news. Larry?
I've got a couple of things that aren't very popular. I'd move that we take the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out for courthouse security. Everybody's for it, but we can't afford it this year. Not, if it gets a second, we'll see.
Is there a second?
Kick that can down the road way too long.
Well, I don't believe that, but that's a difference in opinion. Uh, the other thing is, we can finalize the budget, but we can reduce it up till when, Denny?
You can reduce, if you say we're done today, we can still reduce it right up to the public hearing. You cannot tax more, but you tax less. So you can actually reduce expenditures at the public hearing, which will be March eleventh.
I thought it went to May or something like that, where you can reduce.
No, that's actually a public hearing. Now, say, for example, if we get insurance holidays.
That's what I'm thinking.
March or April, we can, until the state actually certifies back in June, the tax rates. We've done this in the past. I did do some checking on that. We can do it, we have done it. Or say we do get insurance holiday that saved the general basic and general sub a half a million, or basically, general basic, it could save three hundred thousand there. We could come back and tell the state we're reducing our tax asking by three hundred thousand, they'll adjust the tax rates. That's a possibility.
See, that, that's another place that we'll have another three months to look at. And if the claims go down, uh, what do we have in that, what's the balance in there now, two, five?
Two million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Shoot me for forty. Uh, that's okay.
You want...
What do we have to keep then? Two point two? What, what is the threshold?
When we get to two point seven, we consider a holiday.
Oh, two point seven.
But the last three months, we've had close to two million dollars in claims because we've had a lot of unfortunate serious cases.
Right, and plus, it's the end of the year and that.
Right.
We give all those claims.
Our last claims, to give you an idea, coming up next Monday is thirty-six thousand. We've had some, you know, weeks where we've had two to three hundred thousand. So there is maybe a change now. Maybe we're past our crisis period, we're past the end of the year where everybody's hitting deductibles now, they got to pay them. That might slow it down where potentially, you know, another couple of months, we'll know if we can do one. It won't be before the public hearing, but we know he's reduce it after the public hearing, you just can't increase.
Just a gamble.
We can issue more ladders this week.
We could issue what?
Ladders.
Ladders.
Right.
Larry, we can get a second to your, uh...
I noticed.
...to your modus, motion. Did you, you had, did you have another item?
No, just the, uh, insurance fund, uh, because I think that's a, a good possibility.
Well, you know, we, we've gone over, uh, these budgets quite clearly and, and, but I do think, uh, I think there's some more money that can be cut out of the sheriff's budget, particularly the, uh, jail budget, overtime. There was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and eighty-nine thousand dollars, I, I believe, Dennis, in the overtime area there, and that particular line item went up at least four times. And I believe that's an overestimate as far as I'm concerned, and I would like to move that we cut ninety thousand dollars out of that overtime area. Now, this might die of a second too, but, uh, I think that's an overreach.
What was the dollar figure that you wanted to cut?
What's that?
What was the dollar figure that you said?
I think that, uh, that overtime line item was a hundred and eighty-five...
You want to cut all?
Eighty, no, I don't want to cut at all.
I was just asking what you're asking.
I'm, I'm going to cut ninety thousand dollars out of that, out of that particular overtime budget because it's, it's doubled, I mean, tripled, uh, in that particular area, and I know that there's just, uh, some justification, you know, presented to us for that. But I think that that's really an overestimate.
Well, it did, it did jump because there went to the shifts or putting, I think, and my understanding is there's just basically two additional people per shift.
Per shift, four hours more.
And it's been done through overtime. So if we cut it, I'm thinking about seconding it, but I'm not there yet. Thinking out loud, so if, if we reduce it, and if it was complied with, it, it would require a different scheduling, going back to a different scheduling, which is their decision. It's their management decision. We don't, we don't have any control over that. So what, I'm just thinking ahead.
Have we already cut that? We've cut that some already.
No, we haven't cut it at all.
A hundred and eighty-nine, you have not cut.
We have not cut that hundred and eighty-nine. I don't have my copy here, but I'm, I'm sure you did.
The actual in thirteen was twenty-nine thousand. And at the, for this year, it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. I mean, it is just...
Now, to have, giving an update through January, we're close to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand actually spent in that lineup in the jail.
One twenty-five, one sixty-eight.
January's thirty thousand. Now, we're through the big holiday crush. You know, I'm sure I should go down some, but, you know, when you get talking to the eight man shift, the twelve man shift, that's solely the discretion of the sheriff. But it can be altered by budget.
So what you want them to do is go back down to five or six people?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Well, that's exactly what you guys are going to do.
No, if the board is saying to give them ninety thousand dollar cut, if they need that overtime, they got to make a determination. If the board sticks with those budgets, where are you going to, again, we're back to the word, reduction of staff.
Right.
Where are you going to get the money?
Well, how come we don't talk about the non-mandated programs that we keep funding year after year after year? Seventy-four thousand for that, you know, Meals on Wheels and all that. Why don't we cut Phoenix? That was a grant. That's a non-mandated program.
But Phoenix program is providing services to help the jailed population.
I disagree.
You don't think Phoenix is?
No, I don't. I don't think any of these programs should be, be paid by the tax people.
Well, I think they're money savings for the, and it's been proven because, as you know, David, you've been around long enough to know that.
One or two people a year?
We had overcrowded problem a number of years back. We had over two hundred and some odd people on a waiting list, and we started implementing these diversion programs for people relative to the jail. We brought that population down. We did not have to, we did not have to build a new jail. We also opened Prairie Hills at the same time.
That's how, that's how you guys offset the population problem.
And we had law enforcement, we had the judges, we had the, uh, all of these folks that we've used to, to do this, to get that population down. It's still down. We're not up to those levels again. We're not up to those levels.
But I disagree.
We don't have two hundred and some odd people on a waiting list.
Well, because the reason, the reason you guys had a waiting list, and this is prior to me being on the board, is because we didn't have Prairie Hills open. Once you opened up Prairie Hills, you alleviated the problem.
We alleviated the problem just with the minimum security folks. We had those people housed over there too. Now, we can move those folks out to Prairie Hills.
Right.
And in, in the, in the Phoenix program, I don't think should ever go away because that, that program will keep that revolving door, uh, from, from revolving and getting repeat people that, uh, we normally get back in that jail.
But also the tax...
They have been a benefit.
The taxpayers shouldn't have to be paying for programs that, that were grants.
That's why I disagree with you. I, I, well, I think that, you know, the grant programs are very good to the point that where they, if they do run out, then the taxpayer have to assume that. But then we have to evaluate, I think, you know, has that program been of value to us in saving us money and not building a new jail? Because that's what we were considering. We were considering building a thirty million dollar new jail.
Mm-hmm. Fifty.
I thought it was thirty million. But still, we, we, we saved that, we saved those funds and not having to do that. So they are of value, uh, to the community as a whole, and I think the community appreciates that.
One example would be, are you saw on Semco, Mark? What if the board cut out thirty-three thousand dollars Semco? What happens to Semco on your Sioux County Regional Transit?
That goes to search program and it would close down.
So what goes on?
Fifty-five buses.
Absolutely.
It's over.
Yeah, and it's providing services to our citizens, so instead of taxing for, and I'm not disagreeing with you, David, you aren't taxing for it, it is providing a service. And I'm not standing up for all of it. I don't know how much good they do. I think they do a lot of good, but if we don't have them, where do they, where do our senior citizens go with that?
Absolutely.
We've got problems there.
They do have value to the community as a whole.
And unfortunately, if the county assumes all of this, or the cities don't.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you know, we, we aren't cutting out all of that money from that particular line item. Uh, that, that line item will still be up, uh, two and a half times more than what it was last fiscal year. But I do think that the hundred and eighty-nine thousand, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in, for overtime is just exorbitant, it's too high.
Except there's been a hundred and twenty so far this year, right?
I know, but...
So you're forcing them to change what they're doing.
Yes, I am, to a certain extent.
But then, I, I, I guess we beat the poor sheriff up more than anybody else in the whole county.
Well, nobody has the eight hundred thousand dollars in additional funds either.
Yeah.
Nobody did.
But the sheriff has made up for that money with vacancies. So it's, he's not going to be going over his budget.
In the current year.
Right, that's, we're talking about the current year. I don't know that, we can get ninety thousand out of there, but it's a management call, and I don't know what the dollar figure is. I don't know if they're right, I don't know that they're wrong.
Yep, yep.
But it's, to discuss it, it should happen.
The other thing, we've talked about two revenue, potential revenue generating. One is a suspended license. This has to be looked at because Plymouth County make four hundred thousand, God knows what Woodbury County can make, but somebody's got to start to, and that starts probably with the county attorney's office.
It does.
To the sheriff, and this would solve a lot of problems. Not saying it's needed in the sheriff's office revenue to help this general basic fund that we're losing out on right now. But that's not even here. We can't really predict in the next year's budget, so something down the road.
Well, that died of a second too, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, any other, any other suggestions from the board? Uh, just a minute, Jim. I, uh, we're, we're still discussing and from, with the board.
Thing is, nobody here wants to hamstring the sheriff.
No.
Uh, whether he's right or wrong, I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure he knows. But that's a lot of money, and, uh, I don't think we can get that much out of there, George, but, uh...
Well, we're still leaving the sheriff with two and a half times the money in that particular line item. And, uh, and it does put the onus back on the sheriff of maybe doing some reorganization or looking at that structure in a different way, just as we have to do all the time. And, uh, we can save some money there.
Is there ever an instance, I'm gonna say, I'm still new here, of where you just say there's eighty, ninety thousand? Find where you're going to cut it in your budget. If it's not overtime, find it somewhere else, but that's what we're gonna cut. The overall budget's gonna be cut this amount and you, and-
I think what you're doing is forcing the sheriff back into running over his budget at the end of the year.
I don't think he's gonna do that.
Oh, I don't either, except if we put him in a corner, he can do that.
Well, I don't think we're putting him in a corner. We're still giving him additional funds in that particular line item. If, if I was cutting him, if my suggestion was to cut him a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, then we would be putting him right back to where he was last fiscal year. But he's still going to have two and a half times in that particular line item. That's where I'm coming from.
You know what bothers me, and I don't know if the, if the sheriff wants to, um, address this, but it's, Larry, you asked it last time. It was, if we looked at the new positions, would that reduce overtime? And their answer was a very quick no. It will not affect that overtime whatsoever, which is very alarming to me. Um, and would make me think, why would I ever go for another staff person when, when this has gone up so much? So there's something I can't get, get my arms wrapped around. I don't know where it is, but, um, it's just gone up so high. And, and I don't know why a new person, I don't know, it just seems like there's no, no end to the overtime.
Because it's, it's a contractual issue. It's part of the contract.
I know that, but-
When, when, when you guys sign off, or when we sign off on contracts, we have to abide by those contracts.
Of course we do. And we do it in good faith. I have no problem with that, but-
Well, by the sheriff doing what he did. Yeah, we have to have overtime over there, okay?
Well, I, I agree with that.
Is it, is it gonna be, is it gonna be less? I don't know. But we also need to address the issue of this overtime. Every, every overtime's going in there. The holidays going in there, the, you know, all that's going in there. People need to see that.
That's nothing new. We've always, we've always known that.
But people don't understand that, though.
I think they do.
Well, what people don't understand is the word overtime because that is not time and a half dollars. It's straight time overtime. And that's hard to get a handle on for anybody in the public little, and we deal with it all the time.
Right.
Uh, so a person making ten dollars an hour for eight hours, he's still making ten dollars an hour for the extra four. Uh, he's not getting time and a half. Sheriff, you've got a lot of problems, uh, whether they're, you know, partially of your making or not, who knows? And we're just concerned about making sure you got enough money to run your organization over there.
And that's, that's why I asked for that amount. That, that isn't a number that I just, you know, grabbed out of the sky. That is what it costs to have the additional, we didn't increase staff, but we moved to have more people on the floor. And that's what it costs to run that with the addition of all the holiday and all those other contractual items. That's why that number is gonna be, uh, right on the button. It wasn't some number that we just thought, well, let's come up with this arbitrary figure and hope that they go for it. This is hardcore facts that we have gone over with, uh, Jennifer in our office, with Major Wick, with Gene at the auditor's office. Uh, discussed some with Dennis. And these are, this is what it costs to run the jail at this proper staffing level. And, uh-
Can I ask you again?
Yes.
If you get a new jailer, you are still not able to reduce your overtime?
No, no, because one jailer, I don't know why that's so complicated.
I don't know why either. I would just say they could take some of those hours that would, but I don't know for scheduling, you could-
Right. Here's, here's-
Schedule somebody else.
Staff, you said that we added staff. We had jailers that became deputies, and then we filled, so you fill the vacancies. We haven't added staff.
Well, and not people, but you've add, if you, do you have two more people on the floor at all times?
Right.
So that, to me, it's just the way my mind works.
Right.
So it, it's like adding staff. It may be the same person, more hours, but it's, you're, you're covering with more people.
Right, and you have to pay.
And that's why we're seeing the inflated, so I, I don't-
That's, and that's where the price goes up because we're-
Yes, I know.
What I've decided was that you're not gonna be able to give me the bodies that I need to put out a help wanted. And here's what the study said from Department of Justice, recognizing that. So how do we come about it? Well, even what you've talked about Band-Aids and out of Band-Aids, this is just that approach. This is just getting us by because you can't cut, cut, cut and not have that jail to be staffed or the, or the deputies out on the road. I mean, we just, we operate on as slim as a budget as anybody in the county. There is no wiggle room. And what I'm asking and what I've asked for a year, you've heard me stand up here and talk about this situation. We, our inmate population today was two-hundred-and-seventeen. We've had to call the marshals and ask for inmates to be taken out because we're, we don't have room for all that. So then we move them out. That's just where we're at right now. That'll probably slow down in April, but then in May through September, it picks back up. It's not slowing down enough. We can't live like we did ten, twelve years ago.
Well, now wait, David, it's only a year, year and a half ago that our average population over there was like a hundred and sixty. So are we making more arrests? Is there more crime? Because to jump forty to fifty people a day in the jail in a year's time, that's-
You know, there's a, I wish I had that crystal ball, Larry, you and me doing it on the road.
Well, no, right, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
Here's the deal. Um, there's no more people on the street. Is crime going up? I don't know. But, uh, there's a violent tendency going on, and the judges aren't releasing them, and the state's saying there's certain minimum standards that people have to be in jail for. Um, so that's where we're at. I, I don't have the uniform crime report to say how much it's jumped or if it has at all. But there's a tendency look around us. We've had more homicides here lately than we have in years. There's just a tendency for our crime and the people that are incarcerated, uh, they're serious offenders. And the judges and the probation, they don't want them out on the street. And I know you guys don't either. So somehow we have to-
But Dave, are we holding, are we holding prisoners for the state longer than we should be, that should be transferred to, to state institutions?
We try to get them out as soon as we can get them out.
Yeah, because that's what's, that's what happened in the past.
Yeah, no, we, we see no benefit in that. We're watching that.
No, there's no benefit. That's because we're, we're still, we're still supporting them, paying for it.
We're trying to get them out of here as quick as we can. And, you know, we don't like to make that call to the marshals, but when we're at that high level, we have to call them. And because, you know, one thing that you may not understand, when we have people in our jail, we wanna make sure they're separated from other people. There's certain people that don't belong in sections.
Understand that.
And we're so crowded, uh, we have limited space where we can move people.
Sunday morning, we have two hundred and twenty-nine in jail, and we turn thirty-four beds.
So that's-
Pretty crowded.
In the LEC?
Yeah.
We missed a party Saturday night, evidently.
You know, and it's winter. That's the scary part. It's winter, it's usually not that crowded.
Yeah, we, we, we whacked you all, but like I said, we have not whacked you down to the bare bones as far as what your request was, Dave. And, uh, and this does not cut your back all the way either. I mean, you still have two and a half times, uh, much money in that line item than you would, uh, from past, past years. So I'm just, I'm saying that, you know, we, we need the money so that we don't have to increase, you know, the people's taxes in this county. Um, uh, 'cause I don't like, I don't like doing that. Um, and I know that you're justifying, you know, the reasons for us having to do it. Uh, but that just seems to be a lot of money in that overtime area that could be looked at again by your, by your departments in readdressing and how we, how we house or how we place those, those people in, in our facility.
Well, I think like Dennis said, George, is if, uh, where we're at today is because of the three shifts and adding the extra people on each shift. By when we started January twentieth, going to twelve-hour days and two shifts and one relief shift, it is gonna help us. But it is gonna cost us X amount of dollars, which we figured basically-
Well, I thought that's where this extra money is going to, that a hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Right, that's where it's going.
To those twelve-hour shifts.
It's going, a hundred and five thousand will cover that. And then the rest is all the overtime that's during the holidays and things such as that we're contracted with.
In fact, those extra four hours are straight time.
Exactly.
So we're saving on benefits by not hiring a new person.
We are. That, I, that, I know that.
I mean, that, that, that's my point. We-
So if you, if you went back to- If you went back to your regular shifts and we give you two more people, then would that save, you're saying that's not gonna save money? You're still gonna have that same overtime-
Right.
In those specific areas.
Because then it'd be off.
Because you can't reorganize. How many jailers do you have now?
I, I don't worry about jailers. I worry about man-hours. And if we do, we did a shift relief study for you. Department of Justice Correctional, Correctional, it's only a shift relief study for you. It takes three point zero eight people to keep one person working in a jail. Two people is not going to eliminate the overtime problem that we have right now up there, trying to keep one.
Okay, but that's what you asked for. And-
Because, because we agree. We asked for more than that.
Okay, that's what you asked for. And, and I, I think, you know, the hours that you're talking about is important also, Todd. Uh, but I also think that the number of, of individuals that you have, uh, in that specific department count, too. Now, if you only have twenty people at a department and you're having to, you know, do twelve-hour shifts, then yeah, you're really stretching it. I mean, that's impossible. But if you got-
You misunderstood the, the study that we gave you. Those were additional people, not the people that we, we have working over there right now.
But currently you have, currently you have how many correctional officers?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
Counting sergeants.
I thought it was fifty-two.
Not counting the sergeants and desk personnel in front, yes.
Okay.
Correctional staff on the floor in the jails, fifty-two.
Fifty-two people.
We've got over sergeants and, uh, we've got an administrative assistant, a jail commander, and somebody that works the front desk. So the correctional officer doesn't have to come out.
That's busy with all the, the phone system that we have now, where it's out in the hallway.
Right.
People bringing all the things in, that one person is-
Right, I know. I mean, that person is filled.
We really are.
I mean, you-
We honestly, I mean, I, I think you get it. We are just, we're running, uh, one person to do a lot of work. But that, you know, that's county government. I mean, it isn't, we're not, we don't have guys, uh, one guy shoveling, three watching. Those days have gone, you know?
Well, I don't think you ever have up there. I, I really don't think you ever have. But I'm just trying to get my mind around, uh, you know, with the fifty-some people that you have, how do you, how do you get that to twelve hours? I, because I'm concerned, too, about that many hours for, on an individual, particularly working in a stress environment that you guys have up there every single day.
We've, uh, discussed it with them since it's been a couple of weeks. They're excited because they now have every other weekend off, where some had to wait eight years before they got a weekend off. They're getting every other weekend off. Um, they work two days, they're off two days. The schedule works out very good for them. Uh, the twelve hours, they're saying, may seem a few hours, you know, just a little bit, but the joy of fact that knowing every other weekend off or am off in a couple of days, I never worked more than, uh, three or four, three days.
Three days stretch.
That's it, you know? So they're well-rested, coming back to work.
Do we have-
We are not the first jail that's done this in the state.
Okay, I, you probably aren't. I, I would, I would agree with that, but-
Not a lot in county went to it.
How many, I mean, is, is all of your equipment working up there? Because I understand that, you know, we've never been given a tour.
Right.
Uh, but I understand that some of your cameras are not working?
Not, not, um, giving us the adequate time. And, and I think Todd has sent letters off, and now we have them.
Right. Are they, are they, are they working now? I mean, we're talking about brand-new. They aren't. So we need to do something about that.
Yes, yes. Uh, we want to make sure that we have a minimum amount of time-
Absolutely.
That camera's covering. And I think they made a promise and they didn't come through with it.
Well, I, because we've made a, a, a major investment up there in, in renovating that and making it, uh, safer for the employees that do work up there and keeping the people behind bars that needs to be there. And so we, we basically need all that equipment to work. And the work right now, I mean, I don't, if I'd have known about it earlier, I would have gotten on somebody's behind.
I think we've got that message across.
Okay, I hope, I hope so.
Yeah.
Uh, but that should be more economy as a measure, too, with the remodeling and the cameras and all of that.
Uh, the remodel was mainly, a lot of it was the doors and then, um, the upbeat of how to do a touchscreen on it. We haven't really added, uh, additional cameras at this point.
Well, you haven't yet? Okay. So the new cameras are not gonna be added until, I know there was some, uh, budgeting situation there where you said, Dennis, we didn't have enough-
We do have-
I'm kinda getting off the topic a little bit as far as the cuts.
But we wait for RML to come back with prices and how much to do certain areas of the jail. Call the holding rooms. We aren't getting any response from them. And that's another issue.
Yeah.
That's not real.
Not, right. Okay, well, my motion didn't get a second anyway.
Part of that, not to drag this dog down the road, but part of that is, uh, the warranty issue.
Yes.
If you go in there and screw around with what's been put in, is the warranty gonna be good tomorrow, you know? And so by adding-
No, it won't.
Uh, RLM's gotta make sure all that stuff works.
And that was the, the big issue.
If I could get out of the warranty, I'd be happy.
I am, yes. You already sold the property, I don't have to guarantee it for you.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, basically, without the citation to your motion, you have been given more hours, more man-hours in the jail.
Yes, you have.
If we, if we keep this, you have-
I-
You've managed to get some-
I told these guys last week-
Blood out of a turtle.
I told these guys last week, I was hesitant to say this, but I'm gonna do it out of fun. You know, George H. Bush said, read my lips, no new taxes. President Obama said you could have that healthcare plan. And I'm gonna say that we're gonna keep that budget right where it is. And if not, these two are gonna go work up there for sure.
I heard it right here, Dave. I heard it right here, Dave.
We will do, honestly, we are, we are really trying our best. And I, I think you've had a tough decision, but, um, you know, it, it's imperative that we have the extra staff. The only way that we could do it was to, uh, to go to this. And down the road, eighteen, nineteen, we're here, Dennis, I mean, that, that's when we will hope for some more staff so we can cover it. But until then, this is really truthful budgeting. This is not smoke and mirrors. These are monies that we need.
Well, I, I just want, you know, I, I really do want, and the, and the taxpayer would understand this, why, you know, we are going to have to probably increase, uh, our tax asking this year because of these additional things, which is, your department is, is, is very, very important. I mean, we like, need law enforcement. We need good healthcare, a, a health department to keep this community a quality community.
Right.
Um, uh, but we can't do it without, without, based on your rationale, uh, without the kinds of increases that you're talking about here. And we can't do it without some of the things that Dennis, you brought up here earlier this morning. Uh, we've got to increase our insurance fund, five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's, uh, an account that I wish we could have more control of, but we just do not. Um, uh, folks want a security, you know, in, in, in the, in the, in this courthouse. And they also want security in the other two buildings. You know, those people are important, too.
If I may.
Uh, that's gonna cost us a lot of dollars. So those costs, we have very little control.
I'm, I'm not sure Dennis knows probably, but, you know, it's a, it's kind of a crap show, not a gambler. But our expenses, medical expenses, so far, we're, we're looking pretty good. Hopefully we can, don't have anything at the end. And, you know, that would be money that would, last year, you took, uh, a pretty good chunk away at the end.
Under the jail?
Yeah, in our jail, yeah. And, you know, we're hopeful we don't have any.
You took it all, so.
Right, I, I'm sure you, I'm sure you thought of this long before this discussion, but you better keep your pencils real sharp for the next year and a half.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Trust me, yeah. The key thing, George, please, somebody push a suspended license. We're losing a lot of money that's potentially here. They could help them, but it could help other departments, and it could help the taxpayer. We need to get this thing-
Well, we need to have a discussion with our county attorney, really, to get off center and, and to get that down.
I think he's for it. He wants to meet with you after the budget, he told me, so.
All right, good. Because that's income that we can use.
It is. And I think he recognizes it.
Okay, good. I don't have any more to-
Do we have any efforts going with the twenty-four-seven thing in legislature?
I'm going to go to Des Moines, uh, next Wednesday. They have legislative deal with the sheriffs. And I'm asking our local legislators. And then, um, Todd and I spoke with a party out of Des Moines that we could maybe be the first pilot program.
LS two?
What was that?
LS two?
Yeah.
Um, wouldn't all the sheriffs be interested?
I would think, uh, I-
I'm sending emails. I, I wanna be on the topical list of the pilot program.
I'm hoping that there aren't, and we are, and then we-
Yeah, well, that's good, that's a good point.
Well, you know, I'm convinced after visiting Sioux Falls, you know, and the rest of us going up there looking at that program, that that is a, an ideal program, another good program to subvert, you know, that attrition problem that we have. Not attrition, but revolving door situation over there, and it would get those numbers down in our jail.
Well, remember, it was-
And it would bring in some income.
Three hundred people, the sheriff said, were on that at four dollars a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Right.
That's a tremendous amount of money.
That's, that's good income with very little expense to it, so.
Yes. And he, he, he increased his staff by using that money, but it was after that money was generated.
Right, but it pays for itself.
Right.
All right. Gentlemen, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Dennis, uh, do you have any other-
Well, with these-
Suggestions?
With these two transfers, I'll reach out, leave where we're at and come back. There's, there may be a potential, we may have to use some reserves. There's a potential of some income coming in that Larry asked him last week or two weeks ago, whereas it will be coming. Maybe we could do it for one year, but we aren't gonna be using, like I say, what we had pass a million dollars here, a million dollars here, a million here. Because that's what's got, trying to hold the taxes down, which was a great effort because times were tough. Two, three years ago, we were in a recession. We're coming out of that recession somewhat, and it-
It's getting worse.
It, it does catch up with us.
Yeah, it does.
And I guess once we back the bullet, then next year, the bullet's been a bit.
All right.
I have one more question. This is just, what does it cost to house, um, a prisoner? Have you calculated that per day? I know I've heard the figure, but do you have an idea?
I have a, I have a, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just, was wondering, I mean, we've heard what it costs to house a juvenile. I'd just like to know what it costs.
Well, it was fifty-five dollars, but I don't know if that was a cost or what the feds said they'd give us.
You know it's a lot more than that.
The feds said they would give us.
And they do come in, the feds can come in and audit on per diem, and it could go up, but it could go down.
Absolutely.
And they did that once, when they called me a year ago.
They, they don't go up, they go down.
Right, and we had that.
They determine what costs go in there, so.
Absolutely.
Right, and almost happened, but thank goodness they left. Didn't have to change it.
Yeah. Well, Larry and I spent a lot of time in Washington DC a few years back negotiating, um, uh, contracts with the federal marshals on the use of our facilities over here. And when we were looking at, uh, the possibility of building a new jail, uh- we were talking about setting aside, I think it was 110 cells, Larry? I think it was 110 cells.
I don't remember that far back, George.
For the, for the, for the federal prisoners. And they were only talking about then, fifty-five to sixty dollars a day for those federal prisoners. Now, that does not, I don't think, meets the cost of housing those folks over there. I don't think it does.
The shortcoming of that is Dakota County built a new jail based on those numbers.
Yes, they did.
And it's, it's overpopulated now, worse than what we're talking. But they committed to the feds.
Yes, they did.
I don't know what county, but there's one in Iowa that just paid off their jail, they go doing this with the marshals. But I think the problem with the marshals is it's, you gotta build it, and then they'll come, and that's a curse.
That is right. That was the other stipulation. They would not guarantee us that they would use it. But we have to build it, and they would use it.
And then the second risk there was Greg there, that we can get reversed the cost of building, but how do you put personnel to run it? There's a jail in California, ten millions on a jail, they couldn't open.
That is right.
Right across the street on Water Street, the center there. They build a new center, they gain housing, they get more people. That's a major problem.
Is that still closed?
No, it's open now. It opened this year.
But it's sat there for probably a year.
Now, when you talk about us holding federal, or state prisoners, that's coming back. And the reason is, they opened forty-some beds over here, and there are three other facilities that open new beds. Now, those people are gonna come out of the state prison system and fill up those beds, but there's still 600 waiting to get into that facility. So, then you've got the ones coming out of the counties, and they've opened a couple new facilities at the state level. They're gonna fill up, and we're gonna be right back in the cycle in three, four years. James?
Yeah, I've got an idea, actually. You know, Mr. Boykin just talked about finding ninety thousand dollars. I think I've got an idea. Can you come here for a second? I wanna make sure. You have a contribution to other agencies that's non-mandated. It's 186,000 dollars. What's that for, again?
That goes to the Juvenile Provincial Bureau, and then the Juvenile Provincial Bureau, Eastside's court, the money goes.
Okay, and where's the money go, then?
Right now, it goes to Sanford Center.
Okay, and that's a non-mandated service that you could cut to actually find savings, offsets.
Well, you could, and then close out the Sanford Center.
And then you got away with the effects of...
That is where we are with all these programs.
All of them?
Yeah.
Meals on Wells, Senior Center, I mean, there's a whole host of them.
Or maybe a small decrease every year so they can start finding other revenue sources as well. I mean, I, no doubt, they're good programs, but, you know, you're talking about ninety thousand dollars to make sure the jail can run properly with the manpower they want? Or there's other areas here that are non-mandated that should really be considered?
Well, you know, everybody knows that I support non-mandated programs, and I never will stop that. I'm, you know, I'm proud that I am, can support them. And I think that the, I think that the community as a whole has the moral obligation to do that. So that's where I'm coming from, Jim.
Could, could we reduce that by five percent this year in order to save some tax dollars or, or something?
Well, what we tried to do in discussions was get the school board to pick that up, because they're the beneficiary.
That's a great point. We, if the county stopped funding it, then the school board would be forced to do it.
They cannot afford it.
No, they, they will not be forced to do it.
Therefore, you've got juveniles that are disruptive, or whatever the case may be, in the schools. So what does that cost you to send police officers up there to arrest them? So I think the cost is greater if you start reducing outreach services to handle these problems.
But if the school district is the one that uses the program, they should be the ones that should be...
Well, that's where the service is.
I don't necessarily want to argue this point, but the reason we have two kids up in juvenile detention today is because of the outreach programs. So if you whack the Phoenix program and all those things, it's a catch-22.
Which is a thought, so.
You get run over from behind by the truck when you...
And when you get the non-mandated, let's be real careful there, because I'll give you an example. Patrick's not here. And I'm just telling you an example. Conservation, we are required to have six, seven, eight parks. Do we close Little Sioux? Do we close Crown's Lake? Those aren't mandated. So where do you get, cut the mandated, non-mandated? What do they do for the public? I'm not trying to defend them, but we got away, just like Mark said, if we don't have juvenile, we eat twice as size. Do we need twice-sized jail? Where do our people go to provide user fees to park? Where do they go now?
It all has a negative rippling affair. It all has a negative rippling affair.
And the other part of that, and everybody laughs about it, and we talk about it, is sheriff's patrol. It's not mandated to have sheriff patrol.
No, let me give you an example there now. In the last couple... That is kind of a misknown, to say that patrol, patrol itself, and the word patrol, that's not a mandated function, but we have mandated functions that require us to do it 24/7.
You have to respond.
If you didn't have, bro, you would literally have to call people out from home all the time. Like, you have to enforce liquor laws, you have to enforce OWI laws, so we would have to call somebody out. So you basically, you save by having a patrol division.
That's where this discussion is going. By having it, it's not mandated.
For a jail? I need James to figure it out. He'll get it up to about four hundred dollars a day.
But another thing, we're talking about patrol, and that raises an issue from another elected official in the county that they don't understand why transfer patrol is being paid out of general basic fund because they already have a police department, now we pay for patrol. They're thinking of being double taxed. So if we did move patrol out of World Basic, there's a serious problem there, because then we'd have to lay off half our patrol. Unless we go county-wide and contract with every town, X number of dollars, to offset the taxes to the world people to keep all these juvenile patrol on duty, the patrol officers. But that's, I don't see that for foreseeable future. Technically, ninety-two counties out of a hundred are living on general basics. It's called a moot issue, but it hasn't been brought up, just being a poor way.
You opened the discussion. If we were generating revenue from these towns that we have contracts with, that would also offset the cost.
But that's where everything comes back.
I'm just saying...
Manpower, having the manpower to fill the contract that you, that the towns want. Two deputies out of the SWAT car are not gonna be able to sit, go do a town that says, hey, we want eight hours a day. Well, he can't sit in that town eight hours a day. He's gonna get called somewhere else. And then you're not fulfilling the obligation of the contract, which is, we're right back to manpower. You, you, it's spend the money, you know, have the manpower, then go try and make the money, or it's not due basically, because you have to have the manpower to fill the town.
Any further, any further items?
Well, I think we could sit here all day and discuss where we need to cut, but...
For the night.
We'll come back next week. We're right after what you've done, the two transfers. And come back for maybe a possible revenue here, or where we get it. We've been looking very hard. It's gonna look harder.
Yeah, we've looked.
The revenues are more cuts.
And next week, if you've got stuff you wanna cut, throw it on the table. All right?
Okay. Are there any other items?
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I love it.